This is the planning and zoning meeting for the town of Colorado City. The date is April 7th. The time is eight, oh, five zero nine, five oh nine. Please give us a roll call, Vance.
Charles Hammond, he's not here. Charles Bradshaw.
Present.
Lee Highsteed.
Present.
Carl Pavolonis.
Present.
Royal Barlow.
Present.
Coram is present.
I'll offer a word of prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we approach you at this appointed hour. We thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve in this capacity and pray that you'll bless our minds that we can make the decisions that are in the best interests of this town and our citizens. We pray for your spirit to attend us and we thank you for all things and ask and pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Let's, Carl, will you lead us? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have quite a large crowd today. You guys need to keep it down. Okay, public hearing. We don't have anybody here.
Were you gonna do the minutes?
Oh, the minutes, yes. I didn't see anything that I needed to address.
There's one change that I did see. On the roll call, I'm not on there. His listing, Aaron, is one of the commissioners.
There's also a small spelling error. Prayer was offered by Charles. Yes is missing on Charles' name.
Been there. Meeting's back to you. We will, we are at approval of the minutes. If you have anything to add, because there was a couple of changes.
I, I don't. And the guy that shows up late doesn't always get to have an opinion, right? Okay. Deep breath.
So move, we accept the minutes?
Okay, we have motion to accept the minutes of Monday, April 7th.
All second.
Motion in a second.
Who made the motion?
Carl Pavolonis. Mr. Pavolonis.
All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected?
Aye.
Aye.
Appears unanimous. Okay, thank you. Let's see, call the order, roll call, pledge allegiance, meeting minutes. Do all the head be lifting?
It's alright. Had to hurry before the crowd got out of order?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the public comment, everybody's jumping up and down at once. Next on our agenda is the public comment. And are we also live online?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful, good. Just make a note that there is nobody here. So we will move from the public comment and officially open the public hearing. Five twelve PM. This is a public hearing for zoning map amendment parcel four oh four five three one eight eight from RE one A residential state to R one twelve, single family residential. Might as well just go through all of them at once. Second on the public hearing is a zoning map amendment for parcel four oh four five three three seven two from RE one A residential state to R one twelve, single family residential. The third item is a zoning map amendment for parcel four oh four five three four four six from RE one A residential state to R one twelve, single family residential. We don't have anybody in the audience today, but has anybody submitted anything in writing prior to meeting for?
Not received, no written comments.
Okay, so we have no one in attendance and we have no previously written public comment either. So having no public comment for the public hearing will effectively close the public hearing, five thirteen PM, and move to agenda item number seven. Agenda item number seven is a zoning map amendment for parcel four oh four five three one eight eight from RE one A residential state to R one twelve, single family residential. And ask Vance if he will introduce the item to the commissioners.
Hey, this particular lot is located. An application by John Barlow and it is located. Located over there. Forty-five North Willow Street. So this will be a, would be a flag lot. All of these will have to be flag lots to, so. And it's, should meet, should work.
Okay, before we get into discussion, I would, I need to declare a potential conflict of interest. And I'm trying to look up the addresses. The conflict of interest being Excel Design Associates, my company, was hired to do some of the field survey work for these applications. So I just wanted to disclose that as a, as a conflict of interest. I don't know that that would really affect how I would support or, or support or not support either one of them, but I do want to declare that as a, as a, as a conflict of interest. Right, commissioners, do we have any questions for Vance?
I do.
Yes, please go ahead.
On this application, he's asking for an R one A.
Yes, when he's initially submitted both his and Miriam's, they submitted him as an R one A. We went back to him and told him that, yes, we would prefer R one twelve.
Okay.
And in your packet, you've got an email from him acknowledging that change in both of those.
Okay. It's a great question and I appreciate the work that you do, Vance, in that regard. I, I think generally it's best to not overallocate density if it's not, you know, if it doesn't accomplish what the applicant is, is trying to do. So it's a rezone to R one twelve. Any other questions from any of the commissioners?
I know we've talked about before not preferring flag lots. Just ironically, three of them come up at once.
Are all three of these potentially flag lots?
It was the same way when we first approved flag lots. So we had got hit with a bunch and then it went quiet for quite some time.
I am, I have been publicly, I publicly voiced my concern. I, I am not a fan, a fan of flag lots. What, in our ordinance that we adopted, I don't remember the specifics, but it's a staff-related application, right? So.
Once, once the zoning is approved, then the lot split is processed like any other parcel split.
Yeah, okay.
The same reviews, the same requirements. They have to get utilities, they have to do all that fun stuff.
Fire hydrants, access road.
Depending on what's there.
So the, puts commissioners in a, in a little bit of a tough spot. An application for a rezone is, is really not, we, the commissioner, the commission, right? We make a decision or we make a recommendation to council strictly based on the merits of the application, right? So it's from one zone to the other, whether they're gonna do a flag lot or do something different, right? So to be consistent, if the property is a good location for R one twelve, then commissioners really don't have a lot of influence on a yea or nay over a flag lot.
And, and if you'll recall, when we amended the code to allow the flag lots, we did limit them. We did restrict what areas they could be in.
Oh, that's right.
And it was in an attempt to be ahead of some of the more creative splits that were being proposed.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
And give people an option that was, I mean.
Yeah.
That was better than some of the alternatives we were seeing creep out of the woodwork.
Yeah, there were zones in town that we clear, said no flag lots here.
And we did limit it to the existing one acre lots. You know, new development can't just design flag lots.
Anything smaller than one acre can't. What areas didn't, are new here, so what areas did we say no?
New construction cannot have.
What we said was it had to be an existing lot.
Oh.
On the Short Creek subdivision flats, pages, ex-throughs, whatever they were.
Okay.
As recorded on this date.
Okay, so after that date, none?
New developments, lots that weren't already defined, they couldn't, they would have to develop them somewhere.
Okay, makes sense.
And the blocks that, that we identified in that ordinance was, generally speaking, was more in the town, middle of town.
Right, it was the areas, it was restricted to areas that had a preponderance of these one acre lots.
Yeah, yeah.
This one, it looks like there is a street or street access though to the west, to the backside of the lot.
Is an alley.
It is an alley.
Private alley. The driveway to that upper lot.
I sure wish.
And so it, it will not, it will never qualify as a street.
What is the wit, we, I'd love to have a planning-related discussion on, on some of these private alleys.
We need to, there's a couple of them that could potentially be construed to become a street.
Yeah, that's exactly right. It'd be nice to identify which ones make sense and which ones don't. Because it, I, I know that.
Those are too narrow.
There was a private alley just like this on a, on a little project I did in Hilldo. And we ended up dedicating a little bit of land to make the private alley wide enough for an actually, like a city street. And then dedicated that, that portion of it, improved it and then dedicated it. Because it would be sure nice if all of these lots were cut in half and there was a private residential, or a street.
John, we may have this discussion on this one.
Yeah.
Might be a candidate for that.
Because you, you know, it's also lends well to the conversation we're having about revising our standard street sections.
Right.
You know, if, if there was like a forty or forty-five foot residential street. Because the, the street like this is only gonna service eight, eight lots.
A couple of preliminary flats with a thirty-five foot.
Yeah, and.
Because it was lim, serving such a limited number of, and of course, you would not have any street side parking permitted.
That's right, yeah. And that, that would, that would be an excellent fit in a situation like this because that street will never have any more traffic than local traffic for those lots.
Right.
And it would be far better to. So what is, what do you think, do you remember what the, right, the width is of these private alleys?
I would have to go measure it because they're not all consistent.
They're not consistent.
Sorry. Like whatever they decided that day.
I really appreciate what you just said about that alley there because it would be, it would be great if, if we identified which of these alleys would or could or ought maybe to be a public street and, and through the application of, of flag lot, check the flag lot applications with, to see if they're adjacent to alleys that we'd like to see become streets. And then it would be possible for everybody along that.
It'd make that flag lot much, much beautiful.
Make it, make it a real lot, you know, you know, with street frontage and EMS and.
This particular one, not getting too far out in the weeds, potentially could, but the next ones to the north would not because the hill goes too steep.
On Homestead?
Well, on the, the alley between Homestead.
On Willow.
It's quite a steep. Yeah, you could catch that first lot, potentially the second lot, and then after that, it's gonna be too steep. Dive off into the yard.
Yeah, but that makes sense. You just have it be a dead-end cul-de-sacs, you know, hammerhead, so it doesn't go all the way through. It just could go up to that.
We can look into that, but either way.
I, yeah, I can't say that it is a determination on the rezone.
Utilities too, see how those flow.
But it would be worth maybe.
That's right, you'd still have to have a utility easement coming from the main street.
Well, so, so those alleys actually are dedicated on the subdivision plat now, so, so they're.
Some, some of them are.
I would imagine the reason why it shows up the way it is is, yeah, some of them are.
Well, I guess, let me rephrase that. Some of them were dedicated as a public alley and they're not parcelled. They're streeted like a street almost, as far as the county's concerned.
Yeah.
There was a couple of them that were actually broke out as a separate parcel that the UEP has since deeded to the city.
Right, yeah. Well, I, I don't think it would be, let's see. I think it would be worth identifying the alleys in town that we hope to adopt as future public streets. And having that as a tool with the city, then the city staff could check applications like this in future, in the future, against a list of alleys that we'd like to be done.
Developers would prefer not to do the flag lot if there's a valid option.
Right, it's gonna change their building, their ability to construct the building and.
That they may not have that option.
It's a totally different feel.
Yeah, and then, and then the other lots could do a lot split application instead of a flag lot application. And, and I wouldn't be surprised if we already have the width necessary to meet a minimum section. It, it would be a good tool, I think, for everybody, the applicants, the landowners especially. And it might start cleaning up some of our old alley, public, private, you know, whatever, whatever form it currently is. It might be a good way to, to cart, making a better plan for them.
Well, and then, in my opinion, if that became a city street, you'd be putting curb and gutter on both sides.
Yeah, exactly.
And back, you'd be, however the city wanted to improve the alley, that's what you'd be doing on the alley side. On the main street side, you'd be doing the improvements there.
Yeah, and I, and it's like, I don't wanna create, throw a curve ball that creates a burden on somebody 'cause, you know, they want a flag lot and now we're saying make it a lot split and do curb better and whatnot, but, but it might be worth having.
That pushes the improvement of the alley, though.
Mm-hmm, yeah, going forward.
Yeah, but it wouldn't improve the value of their lot.
Considerably.
If they did not have the flag lot.
Yep, they lose the flat, the pole side of the flag lot.
Both, both parcels.
You know, I've noticed that since we modified the lot split process, right? We really kind of opened it up. Seen a lot of improvement in town. Streets getting paved, more properties becoming available, new homes. It's exciting to see the benefit for that. And I, and I think this could be a situation very similar to that. So I, what are your thoughts? I mean, this is, we're in the agenda item for seven, but just as a sidebar.
We need to go ahead, my recommendation would be to go ahead and approve the zoning map amendment.
Yeah.
Recommend approval and then staff will go do some other work and see how feasible that really is.
Okay, let's.
We would work with the applicant if it looks like it's feasible.
We, we, let's move this discussion on alleys to our agenda item number ten. And we'll consider each of these rezones as rezones. And then discuss this a little bit more in, after these rezones. So any other questions specifically about this agenda item? If there is none, entertain a motion from any of the commissioners?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the city to approve the zoning map amendment of parcel four oh four five three one eight eight from RE one A to R one twelve.
Motion from Commissioner Bradshaw. I was second. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I am a yes vote with the, with also noticing the, disclosing a potential conflict of interest there on that one. So we'll move on to agenda item eight, the zoning map amendment for parcel four oh four five three three seventy-two from RE one A residential state to R one twelve, single family residential. Alright, Vance, is this?
This one is located off of Homestead, I believe. This south of Johnson. So it's down in that part of town. It's the same thing. I mean, it's a very similar application. They did initially request an R one A. We talked them into doing an R twelve. I told them I wouldn't recommend approval on an R one A.
Yeah, good.
It's very similar. It would have to be a flag lot development. It's the second lot.
If memory serves on this, George and Miriam did a similar thing on their frontage lot, the three seventy-one.
Couple meetings ago.
Last year. And they had left a piece open as some sort of access to the.
That would be a private drive at best. And I haven't actually seen that land split map yet. I remember they come in and talked about it, but I, I'll have to admit, I've kind of, out of the minutia of some of those discussions, so I'm having to go recreate some of them.
If I remember right, his application, his intent was adult kids.
Yeah, for that lot behind and making the access actually come off of Johnson for the flag lot. They had broken.
Well, we can look at that. I'd have to go back and see what he had on that.
I don't know that it makes a difference which street it's accessed off of, but.
Well, I, oh, it was a while ago, but I sat down with George and Miriam to look at this and there was a layout that could possibly be a small subdivision and.
Maybe it was an option they were kicking around.
I hope that, that if that's possible, I hope the applicant will look at that as a, an option, alternative to a flag lot. Yeah, another sticky one, huh, because of some of these other things. Alright, but with regard to the rezone to R one twelve, are there other comments or concerns? Hearing none, entertain a motion on this item?
Make a motion, we approve the zoning map amendment for parcel four oh four five three three seven two from RE one A to R one twelve.
Motion, maybe care to make a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Commissioners in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appears unanimous. Alright, this is agenda item nine, consider a zoning map amendment for parcel four oh four five three four four six from RE one A residential state to R one twelve, single family residential. Vance, if you were.
This is an application by Tyrone Barlow. It's over on Calvin Street, just off of Mojave. In that part of town. And it's very similar. It's a basic flag lot. That's really the only option he has there.
Yeah. He's put a lot of work into that front house.
Yes, he has.
It's gonna be pretty tight with the driveway there. Yes, I grabbed a machine from there. It was pretty nice.
Okay, any concerns, questions, comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve this zoning map amendment for parcel four oh four five three four four six from RE one A residential state to R one twelve, single family residential. I'll second, second by Commissioner Bradshaw. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also appears to be unanimous. Agenda item number ten, I, I think it would be worth maybe a little, a little thought between now and our, our next meeting, Vance, to see if some of these things would be beneficial. I, I'm a stickler about flag lots. I, I, at one point, I pitched the idea that if you, if you make an application specifically for a flag lot, that, that that had to be noticed to your neighbors and, and possibly even have a, a public hearing. So that if your neighbors were notified that you're making an application for a flag lot and your neighbors would object to there being a, a flag lot next to you, that it, nothing else had a chance to come to the public hearing. You know, make a flag lot application similar to what you do for a rezone. And it, it didn't go very far and maybe that process is maybe taking it a little bit far too. But I, I say that just 'cause I can think of some homes in our valley where there's a home in the backyard and it overlooks the neighbors' backyards. And it's just a little bit of a violation of the quiet enjoyment that people ought to have in their homes and their property and their property rights. So I do think it might be worth revisiting alleys, see which ones would, would be a good fit to make them public streets. And I, and I hope that if flag lots become a problem, that, that we think about making a revision to that process if, if it becomes a problem in town.
Don't you think we should have had that standard off ahead of time? Not wait for it to.
I.
When, when we approved that option, we discussed having some more stringent building standards and stuff and the council was not the least bit receptive to that. They said, we're not interested in making it any more restrictive than any other R twelve.
I remember I attended that.
Any other. They kind of just shot that down.
How about this? How, how about, how about, I would, I believe, well, let me ask the commissioners. I, I think it would be worth, and I appreciate your suggestion, so. What would the commissioners think if we asked Vance to, to bring it up as a discussion item with the city council? Express the commissioners' concerns about the impact that, that flag lots could be having? And, and also just for discussion, you know, the conversation maybe around alleys and the opportunity we have potentially to make it a public street.
I'm very willing to bring up the discussion of, of converting some of these alleys to a, a street with, even though it would be narrower in lieu of flag lots where that would work.
Yeah.
I don't think I'm gonna get very far if I just say we need to make it harder for somebody to build a house on a flag lot.
You know, it, it could.
We already tried that.
I, I don't, I think, I think the way to kind of look at that conversation is, I think it is prudent for the city to, to be ahead of this issue. So, so that could mean just as much or just as little as identifying which alleys could or ought to be a part of our, our, our future. And a flag law application that is adjacent to one of these future alleys would just need to be converted from flag lot to lot split.
Yeah, I can just tell you, there's not gonna be very many.
No, there's, there's not. It's just every time there is one, it, it would sure help. And, and the actual revision to put this into effect could be as simple as writing a one-sentence addition to our flag lot ordinance that says that if there are alternatives that are better suited for planning purposes, that, that we encourage the applicant to look that, look at that, that way.
I think we already, if we go back and read that code, I think we already did say that we would look at the flag lot as kind of a development, you might say, of last resort.
Of last resort, yeah, exactly.
Not another feasible way.
Yeah, and I also, I also appreciate the city's stance on, on not making things too complicated. And I, I enjoy that. I, I would also say to the council and to the public that we have made, you know, subdividing a property very simple. A lot split in Carl City is processed very effectively without an overburden of requirements. So I, I think the city has done a great job making it streamlined and straightforward. And I think the evidence of that is how many we're seeing happen in town.
Yeah, I remember seeing grills and houses popping up everywhere.
Yeah, exactly. I don't know, I don't know of any city anywhere that has as an effective. Um, I don't know, I don't know of any city anywhere that has as an effective, as a, a solution to subdivide lots as, as Colorado City and Hilldale, so I thi- I think the city's doing a, a good job making things simple and straightforward for, for our residents.
But, so what is the harm, 'cause if you look at these three, the one on Willow affects five backyards, the one on Homestead, because it's next to the highway, is two, and one of them's the other owner.
Yep.
The one on Colvin is five backyards.
He's also in a little bit of a hole over there on Colvin, the other, the other lots are kind of above him.
How would that be any different than a, a eighth acre lot somewhere in St. George or Hurricane?
Well, the issue is, is if there is no, if there is no, uh, already dead, uh, whatever, alleyway, you can't go and force them to break up the other people's land to make it so they can get to the backside of their lot.
The, the one that really is, is really fitted for this conversation is the one.
Homestead.
Oh, and Willow.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, Willow.
Yeah, 'cause it has that nice, it's almost a road.
Yeah, and, and, 'cause already, it already has that there, so I, I think this particular application is an excellent example of what we're discussing, and, and it, I think it would be in.
How does that, what does that show up as an address, how does an address work with those they have to create?
We would need it to create a street.
We'd have to name that street as something west, and then it would be something north, something west.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we have a whole book of how to do addresses.
I was just, this is new.
Yeah, and, and it's really, it's a great question, because the addressing is.
Year and a half ago, we adopted a very, a fairly robust addressing regulation.
Yes.
And the, the, Lucille and Dispatch is the one that administers that.
Okay.
The sign.
Um, and it's critical, addressing, it affects so many, so many things.
Absolutely.
Emergency response systems.
And you're the third lot in, so this is what you are.
Past the tree, over the river. And you'll get to Bigga City for that.
You get to the big tractor, you went too far.
So I, I just might say that I think it would be worth staff moving forward, taking a, a harder look at flag lot applications with regard to the discussion we've had today, and see if there's a benefit to moving some of these applications in a, in a different direction that will accommodate some of these concerns.
Especially if we have a policy about the alleys that would get improvements to the alleys.
Yeah, and I think that, that's like, um, excellent, excellent point, um, if we had, as a city, if we have already identified which ones are going to be part of our master future plan, then the policy is in place and applicants can look at it and.
It's gonna be more curb and gutter, but.
Yeah.
More value in their lots, so.
Lot more value in the lots, makes them a lot more valuable.
Much more than what it's gonna cost them.
Do you feel like that's sufficient, or do you think you want to see something with more teeth?
Um, no, I'm just, well, I'm just wondering, like on the one on Colvin, even if it's, you know, I mean, I drive by that enough, I'm, I live a couple bucks away, but, um, what's the harm in having to notify at least, 'cause I know it's the, right now, the ordinance is three hundred feet, right? That's why there's so many addresses listed on our.
Right, right, they have to notify all the, the property owners within three hundred feet to do a rezone.
Personally, by address, they have to mail something to them, or are they posting it and that's good enough?
They should be doing a neighborhood meeting. And they notify those people, tell them when they're gonna do that. And most of the time, nobody shows up.
Right.
But they've done their due diligence if they've done that.
Well, don't they also have to send out a letter to the address, the mailing address of record?
Uh, I'd have to go look up, I don't remember them being required to send a letter on a rezone.
I'm, I'm.
I think that might be Hilldale.
If I remember right, it's just you have to notify them. It gives you several options of how to do that.
I might want to go brush up on my memory of this as well, because it, it's in in, in any other cities that I'm aware of, Hilldale also, but usually there's a standard letter.
Mail service to the addresses affected?
Yeah, and generally on development applications.
Those would be the addresses on file at the county.
Yeah, and, uh, you go to county website, you identify that property, and there's a little button that says, generate a mailing list for all properties within X number of feet, and it just spits out a little list for you.
And our post office wouldn't be delivering them.
So what usually is that?
You have to have a P O box attached to it, yeah.
If it's just, if I'm sending mail to these addresses, none of them are gonna get delivered here.
Well, it's, it'd be mailing addresses on file, not.
Mailing address.
Yeah, the post office won't deliver it.
Well, the P O boxes.
So what, what usually happens, and I don't, like I said, I, I need to brush up on the process in Colorado City, but usually an applicant will provide to the city addressed envelopes, stamps on them, and write the address of every single person on that list, the mailing address for everyone of those people, and they submit it to the city with the rezone application, so that the city staff can take the letter in the envelope and just walk it to the post office, and it gets mailed to everybody, and, and that's, that's a note application. That, that's what I'm accustomed to doing in other cities, and, and the applicant does the whole thing, like, they print out the letter, the letter goes in the envelope, the applicant writes the addresses and stamps it, and they don't seal it, they just leave them open, so that when they hand it to the city, the city looks in, sees the papers in there.
Tell you verify that it's been done?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And make sure there's not anything but the.
Make sure that it's that actual form, that's the only thing that's in there, and then the city seals them, and the staff walks it over to the post office and says, here, and then it goes, it goes to all the P O boxes. The property owners are required, are supposed to, all have a mailing address and a street address with the county, 'cause this is how the county sends people their property tax notices, is through the mail. And I've been in situations where sometimes they don't have a, a proper mailing address with the county, and the applicant has no other choice but to put whatever the address of record is, and essentially that letter will come back undeliverable, but at least they did their, their part.
Right, yeah.
Um, it's, it might seem like a burden for somebody who's not accustomed to doing it, but I would say that it's not a high barrier to, to have these things required.
It's a little bit of legwork, but if, how bad do you want your lot split?
It, it's, it's really simple, um, I, I, I hope that we are mailing out a, a notice to the, to the neighbors for a rezone. And pers- me, I have the opinion that I think it would be worth doing it also for a flag lot application, not, not just a rezone, but also for a flag lot. I, and I'm, I'm of the opinion that a flag lot application should have this notice to your neighbor requirement as part of a flag lot application. Where the neighbors are receiving a piece of mail that says, we are the applicant, we are proposing to do a flag lot, you know? And it could be only to people who are adjacent, you know, so it's not three hundred feet, it could be just anybody directly adjacent. But I, that, that's how I feel, that's, I think that should be required, if the council doesn't feel that way, then ultimately it, it would be up to them, but I, that is, I am of the opinion that, that a mailer should be required for a rezone, but also a mailer for, a notice to your neighbors for a flag lot.
And in general, that's five homes.
Yeah, right, not, not hard.
No.
Not hard, and then, and that, that letter, once that application is put into the city, then the timeline starts, right, so usually there's X number of days that people who are noticed have the opportunity to come into the city and, and file a complaint. And it might not need to be a public hearing in the commission, in the planning commission or city council, it, it, it may not even need to come to commission, it just here's, here's a letter, somebody's applying for a rezone, here's your notice, if you have any objections, come meet with staff and, and file your objections, and then the staff holds on to that application for X number of days, thirty days, or two weeks, or whatever, and waits for anybody who's notified to see if they have any concerns, and staff could make the decision. If some, if my neighbor adjacent to my home where I live wanted to do a flag lot and build a home in the back, like, me, I would appreciate that mailer, and I would walk into the city and I'd say, I object to this. I, I would do that if it were next to my property, and, you know, if nothing else, if somebody doesn't have a concern about it, then they don't file an objection.
No, they're giving, giving them the chances.
Yes.
Fair.
Yeah. That's, I, I am of that opinion. And so if the commissioners would like to see something be different, we could put, uh, this as an agenda item on our next commission meeting, and propose, the commission could propose an amendment to our flag lot process, and send our recommendation.
To council.
To council, and they can deliberate on it, and they can accept it or not. If the commission is in favor of, of going down that road, I would certainly support.
Would it be flag lots only, or would it be just zoning changes in general?
Um, well, I, I, I am, I think we already have this process in place for rezones. So I, I think that's already.
Which is what we, well, we just did an amendment, but yeah, it was, we just rezoned.
Yeah, and, and this is, this is excellent, the evidence of this process is the fact we, you know, we're having a, a public hearing, you know, on these zoning map amendments. I don't, I don't know that if, I mean, like I said, as a, as a flag lot, there may be an opportunity to do this notice to your neighbors without having to come to the planning commission for a formal public.
The concern I have is that, and I'll say it from a staff standpoint, is that we're, we're picking out a residential zone, we're making them do something, we're not requiring other splits to do.
Where I was going with that.
Uh, technically, if you split a corner lot, those other two houses are in the backyard of the yard behind them, potentially. And what happens if the neighbors object, we're really not in a, a position to deny them a building permit for a split? Because our code allows it, it says, and, and the objection stage is at the zoning that would permit them. And so I have a very difficult time wanting to put another burden on that's gonna be basically a way for somebody to vent, but the city is still going to end up approving that lot split and that building permit.
Well, I could say it, I could say it this way, because if, and that says if, if there's a problem worth addressing, we could also address that, because we could create a criteria, and if that criteria is met, then the city would not approve it. And, and that's why, I mean, that, that, that would be worth the discussion.
You need to do it at the zoning.
So I.
At the zoning.
I disagree, because, because the application should not be, the rezone application should not be tethered to. Okay, so I guess what you're saying is, if somebody makes a, a flag lot, if they intend to do a flag lot, then they, then they, then they, you check that box when you do a rezone, it's a rezone for flag lot.
Well, it's gonna have to be based on where it's sitting. Unless they're doing a split right down the middle.
But these didn't, these didn't make that distinction at all.
With the widths.
No, they didn't, and, and I actually am still, I think.
There's no mention of flag lot other than in the emails, it's just a zoning change.
Yeah, and so the commissioner, the way the code is today, with our conditions that exist today, we don't get the opportunity to say yes or no on a rezone because it's potentially a flag lot. Like, we don't, because it's, some might be and some might not be, right, so you know, the reasons is that if we are comfortable recommending that zone on that property in that part of town, then that's the basis for the conversation, but you know, a couple of things that Vance just said, we could.
But we distinguish different frontage for a flag lot.
Uh-huh, yeah. Yeah, so that's a, yeah, that's in that code, right, so what you're saying is in that code.
That comes in after, when they apply for a billing permit, because that's all done back by, at that point.
But it's like what, like Vance says, is if, if we've noticed, if hypothetically, if, if noted, the neighbors were noticed for a flag lot, there really is no mechanism today that exists that says even if somebody complained, that the city has anything that would do anything different, right? 'Cause if it meets the conditions of the flag lot, then they're gonna process the flag lot. And so it, I appreciate what Vance is saying, 'cause there's no reason to introduce allowing people the chance to object if there's not a tool the city can use to deny a flag lot application. So it's either gonna, gonna go one way or the other, if.
Yeah, but that logic would apply to any rezoning.
Well, and that's why it's important for them to show up to the meetings, because if they would've come to the meeting, then they would've known, hey, this is a flag lot, there's no other way to break it up.
No, but if five people showed up and said, I don't want this, would we really be recommending to council to approve that change?
If you remember, we actually turned down a flag lot, but it was chopped up, and it was in the subdivision of, yeah, it was too small in a lot of ways.
Up north of the sem- or east of the cemetery.
Above the cemetery.
I, I think to your point, I think the answer is we will always consider what the public has to say with regard to these applications, it's.
Okay, but how do they know it's coming?
Well, for a flag lot, they don't.
Unless they show up to the meeting.
Which is, which is, if you, excuse me, that's what I was mentioning earlier about.
Each one of these.
Excuse me, one second, that's why, in my opinion, I'm of the opinion that people should be notified through the process of, of, of flag lot application, that, that's my opinion. And what, what I'm suggesting is, I'm trying to get, if the, if the commissioners feel similar in that way or any other way, then I, then I say as a commission, we make a decision to, to have this as a formal discussion item at our next meeting.
Yes.
And formulate what the commission, whatever variation of this might be, and, and the commission can come up with a recommendation that can formally be introduced to city council. I, I think that would be worthwhile.
I, I'd like to have the discussion, but I also wanna voice my, not so much opposition, but singling out the flag lots and making a special criteria for them, I, it's just, I, I understand your objections to them, I don't like them either. But to say, here's a special criteria for flag lots exclusively, I think it, if we're going to make this adjustment, I think it should apply to zoning changes.
I agree.
Period.
I agree. Any lot split.
Any lot split, if it's going to R one eight, all the neighbors get notified, if it's going from R one eight to R twelve, it's, everyone gets notified.
So I, we should look into this.
Not exclusively flag lots, is all I'm saying.
Look into it, because I think that's the way it is.
Right now, if you drive by these properties, there should be a zoning notice on the property with the date and time. It's published in the newspaper of record per state law. The applicant has the responsibility of notifying their neighbors of the zoning. Now, we don't, we kinda have to take their word that they did that. And so it's not like the neighbors didn't know that something was happening with that property.
Yes, that's correct, it's, it's.
And we have at times had people call us and say, hey, what does this mean? What does this notice on my neighbor's property mean? And I can explain to them what it means.
Okay, I would like to see this as a discussion item at our next planning commission meeting, and I suggest to myself and the other commissioners that we spend some time on our own between now and then, reading up on the code as it exists for rezones, what the requirements are.
For notice.
For noticing, mm-hmm, and become familiar again with our flag lot application, so that when we have this come up at our next meeting, we are informed and ready to have a discussion, I, I think it would be worth, if nothing else, refreshing our memories on some of these things and having it as a formal discussion item on the next agenda. If you would, please just, let's add that at our next commission meeting, and we'll deliberate further and maybe recommend an action or, or not at, at our next meeting, but it'd be worth having, worth, worth having the discussion.
I agree.
Is there anything else for the commissioners, Vance, any other? Is there anything else for the commissioners? Vance, any other items?
Our next regular meeting is scheduled for May fifth. Depends on if we have rezones or not. If there's not, we'll probably push it back. But we'll see. Also, as you may or may not be aware, uh, Mr. LaCordi is on administrative leave and I don't expect him back in this role if he's back at all.
Okay.
That's all I'll say in the public meeting setting.
Alright, anything else from any of the commissioners? If nothing else, we'll call the meeting adjourned at five fifty-nine P M. Kept it under an hour.